Good morning, welcome to the regular session of the board supervisory meeting for Tuesday, September sixteenth. Roll call please, Michelle Walker.
Grant.
Here.
Kurt and Buck.
Here.
Layland.
Here.
Schwartz. Paul.
Here. Please join in the moment of silence to reflect on this morning's actions. Please stand if you're ready, join for the pleasure of the next. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item one, motion for the agenda to be received, is proposed or amended. Smooth.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two, public comments, this is a moment for anybody to speak on an item that is not on this morning's agenda.
Right here?
Yep.
Okay. Good morning, Black Hawk County Supervisors. I'm Derek Dear, business rep for Carter's Local six, seven, eight. Based out of Dubuque, but I cover twenty-three counties in Iowa, so I'm here speaking on my membership list. Lives in the area, just want to talk a little bit about the post-bid quality assurance policy, encouraging you to look at that. It just makes it competitive for our members that live in the area to stay working in the area. It makes everybody be responsible. The legitimate contractor is legitimate at the end of the day, but our members have a hard time staying in this market because it's really tough when the subcontractors and stuff are misclassifying their workers or bringing their workers in from out of state or other places. So, this is an opportunity to keep our workforce local, working here versus driving to Cedar Rapids, Iowa City, Dubuque, pretty regularly. It's a tough market here in Waterloo, well, in Black Hawk County altogether. But here are some points, just helps ensure that your city, town, county, and school systems hire only responsible contractors who provide the highest quality, work efficiently, safety, on time, and on budget. Serves as a kind of a protection plan for local governments. By establishing clear, objective criteria contractors must meet to be deemed a responsible builder, bidder, and awarded a construction project. So, right now, we have lowest responsible responsive bidder, and this just helps ensure that we're asking the right questions to make sure they're responsible. But, a lot of times, a lot of municipalities have it where it goes out to the G C, and then it never goes to the subcontractors below. So, nobody ever knows who those workers are there. A lot of times, those people don't even have a federal I D, and they're misclassifying their workers, and it's really tough to compete on that level. It tends to increase the likelihood that local contractors employing local workforce will perform the construction work, meaning a stronger local tax base, lower unemployment, and more dollars circulating through local businesses. We do have other big work, if you're interested, we'll be around for a little while, but we'd love to continue the conversation with you to look how we can help you in the future. Thank you.
Good, could we get some of that now?
In case something happens, you gotta bounce out, or in case this goes down.
Yeah, no, it's great, and I didn't bring any business cards.
Richard working on some of this stuff through policy review as well, right?
Yes. I apologize, I did, oh, no, I do have business cards.
Not a problem, it's me everywhere I go.
I love you, brother.
Bye, dear. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it, thanks, guys. All right. There's no one else, let's move to plans and payments. This is a resolution that the board supervises approves expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlements of such plans as allowed. Move.
Second.
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is nine hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars and seven cents. We are paying three thousand, six hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents from the Sheriff's support fund, and in terms of large or unusual payments today, we are making a large payment to Peter's Construction for the V A of two hundred thousand quarters, twenty-one dollars and two cents, and a portion for the public health renovations of one hundred eighty-nine thousand, two hundred five dollars and eighty-two cents. We are also paying for two twenty-twenty-six Dodge Ram truck for the road department, forty-nine thousand, four hundred sixty-one dollars. And that's about all the large things today. Everything appears to be in order.
This is a resolution, roll call please.
Layland.
Yes.
Kurt and Buck.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item four, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board, Kathy Nicholson here. Just a brief update on the road system. The morning will finish up this week on the Browell Road system. As far as our contract work, our board or contracting is our contract bridge, doing that rehabilitation work on the Eagle Road Bridge Project, that should finish up later this week, and then they will move over to, there's another bridge on Eagle Road, which needs repairs, that will be happening this week. Dubuque Road, that contractor is just about finishing up, I know I said this last week, but we're very hopeful that soon, Asper will be able to put a patch on that, on Dubuque Road, on that very busy road, will reopen. Our bridge crew has moved on to Off Road, that's just south of the Waterloo city limits. That is a complete replacement of that small bridge. They are, the bridge, the crane has been taken over there, so they will start demoing that bridge this week, and then we are, our bridge crew is also starting on Ordway Road, which we are having to defer that work for now, because we need to get the work done on Off Road, concrete works done before the temperatures get too low to do that work. And, let's see, lastly, we did take delivery of the pickup trucks as Michelle indicated, that's for our move forward. Can I answer any questions?
Kathy, is Mount Vernon Road now open?
Yes, thank you, yes, Mount Vernon Road should be open now. Mobilize out of there. Anything else? Thank you.
I was just gonna ask you, with Ordway, when was that, when were we planning on that getting opened?
We had really hoped to have it open before harvest this year.
Yeah.
It was just due to some setbacks with the crane on, in about Mount Vernon Road project. We didn't get as much work done on Mount Vernon Road. And then, like I said, when our bridge crew is setting those beams, we have to pour our concrete closure between each beam, that needs to be done before the temperatures get too low. So, we did go over to Ordway and removed the, that was a wooden timber deck, we did remove that, and do work on the piers, the abutments. So, we should be able to come back during the colder months now, and everything that has to be done can be done in the colder months, and that is setting the new timber deck. We have received the timber deck, as I understand it. We're just waiting, now we get back over to Ordway, and that won't happen until we get done on Off Road now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Yeah, I'm DeWitt, Marketing Coordinator. Just wanted to give you an update on the beautiful blank walls behind you. Our sign vendor will be here, hopefully tomorrow, and do the install on both of these walls. So, that'll be nice, I'm excited about that. The strategic plan now, so that people can find it even more easily on our website, I've added a button to the homepage of our websites that just says strategic plan, so people can find that more easily. And then, the values, I left a document up there, and I've also emailed it to you. I haven't heard any edits on these, and so I'm going to move forward unless I hear otherwise, or unless you would like it on the agenda next week to formally adopt the values. It was part, we did the strategic plan on August twenty-sixth, but I, it wasn't specifically whether we had adopted the definition, so I just wanted to get some feedback on that.
You have one edit out there with the app.
Okay, very good.
I was kinda thinking it was part of it, that you asked it.
Well, we probably should, yeah, I probably should have clarified, and so... But I'd like to get it out to department heads, and so that people can start using it.
Yep. Thanks for asking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else online? Otherwise, we'll move to the minute approval for September ninth, twenty twenty-five. Smooth.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda, the items listed below will be acted upon with a single resolution without separate discussion, unless someone from the board or the public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Smooth.
Second.
Roll call please.
Kurt and Buck.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item seven A, resolution of the contract between Black Hawk County and Pathways Business Health Services, Inc. for substance use disorder treatment be approved to provide up to twelve hours per week of a certified substance use disorder counselor for assessment, group sessions, and individual counseling services in Black Hawk County Jail, in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for the period of October one, twenty twenty-five, through June thirty, twenty twenty-six, is what we want to know about. Sheriff. Sheriff Nate. Smooth. Second.
I'm sorry, second, yeah.
Morning, Board, Nathan, that's Sheriff. Again, this is what we kinda talked about a couple of weeks ago, kind of intermixed with the other contract extension that we did. Unfortunately, as we were going through that process, and as Vicky, who I'd said was gonna be here on the first, she couldn't make it today, Vicky Miller with Pathways, discovered that some of the services that we've been providing at the jail the last five years, as part of the opioid grant, actually don't qualify for that grant. The grant still covers the assessment for any kind of treatment that's needed, but then, when they, once they move into, actually whether it's individual or group therapy regarding just something other than opioids, that's not the opioid grant, which makes sense, but it's also kind of a gap that's in there that the state has recognized, it's a gap. So, if any treatment services for opioids, that's still coming out of the other contract, out of the state opioid funds. What this contract will do is it's basically a second contract to provide the same service that we've been providing, up to twenty thousand dollars a year. She doesn't know that it'll get that high, and more than likely, whatever, whatever comes out of this will be less than comes out of the opioid side, because it's where we've been from. So, I'll improve and design this contract with them to keep doing those. Again, they can assess and say, yes, you need treatment for alcohol, but then we can say, oh, but we're not gonna give you that treatment. So, this contract allows us to, given that treatment, whether it's for math, whether it's for alcohol, whatever. And again, a couple of weeks ago, we were in here, and I was able to lower an healthcare contract by about twenty thousand dollars a year, so I propose that we just use this. Again, I've talked to the state, they've recognized that this is a big gap and probably needs to be filled, could probably fill up the opioid funds, but hopefully with the new A S O, get that taken care of. I highly doubt that that happens this, this year. If you'd have put in the contract where, if the state picks back up, then this contract will just become null and void, and the state will pick that up as a sale.
Nate, this is voluntary for participants in there, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, we don't mandate any treatment in the jail.
And that comes through an assessment that they would do prior, like?
So, the opioid grant that we have, it's through us, it's actually for Pathways.
Yeah.
It pays for one person that's, she has an office in our building, she's there full-time, she's doing assessments, she's working with our medical staff, she's working with our social worker, and they go through and identify high-risk people, she'll do an assessment with them, if it's determined that they need treatment, then we have, so the grant is actually for one point four F T Es. She makes up the one, and then there's two different counselors that come in that each make up the other point four. And then, those people are, do the services, or do the, whether it's as part of a group therapy, or some they do individual therapy.
Would these be for people who are serving, do a time serve, or is this anybody?
It's for anybody that's in the jail, so.
I was just thinking if there's a way to leverage with the county attorney's office, making people continue to get treatment as part of a plea hearing, or any, you know what I mean? Anything like that?
Yeah, I guess to my knowledge, none of it is quarter or treatment, again, it's just think, because obviously by the time someone gets quarter treatment, they're generally gonna be convicted, and they're gonna be moved to the department, so, unless it would be from a previous case, probably end up back in, I guess.
Thank you.
Any further questions, otherwise, we've got a motion and a second. Resolution, roll call please.
Grant.
Yes.
Kurt and Buck.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item seven B, resolution of the contract for library services between Black Hawk County and the board of trustees, and library, public libraries in Cedar Falls, Dunkirk, Evansdale, Hudson, Jamesville, La Porte City, and Waterloo, in the total amount of two hundred and ten thousand, seventy-three dollars, for F Y twenty-six be approved, and that the chair be directed to sign, and that the previous board action of September ninth, twenty twenty-five, moving two hundred and one thousand, seventy-three dollars be rescinded as submitted by Michelle Dean, your finance director. Smooth.
Second.
I just literally put the wrong total in, the amounts per city were correct, but of course, our action read the totals, just cleaning that up.
All right. Resolution, roll call please.
Layland.
Yes.
Warren, yes?
Yes.
Kurt and Buck.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item eight A, motion to approve the commotion of Linda Rosin Steel from accounts payable specialist one to accounts payable specialist two, and the auditorium office is recommended by Karen Shaw, lots of counter. Smooth.
Second.
I can just speak to this just a little bit and answer any questions you have, but moving into this role, I, we have gone from, I think when I first started, we had three additional staff, but we keep becoming more efficient, and just, this is enough, just another layer of becoming even more efficient. I think it's really important to have all of our staff cross-trained. We have two people on payroll, two people in accounts payable, two people in elections, and two people in platform, and all of them are cross-trained, with the exception of accounts payable, so it's just moving all of our staff to be cross-trained. It just helps with efficiency, it allows for continuity of operations, if somebody's on vacation, that there's not this bottleneck where we're waiting for somebody to come back, or a manager having to step in, so it just creates this flexibility and efficiency, and just makes the department run smooth, it also recognizes employee development, and making sure that everybody is able to do all the tasks of the department. So, I just think that this is just another piece to improve efficiency in our department. So, I would recommend cross-training, bold those positions, so in order to do so, we need to make sure that they're at the same level.
This is a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry. A. Item eight B, motion that the personnel requisition for the office specialist, full-time replacement in the treasurer's office be approved, recommended by Linda Intman, county attorney. Smooth.
Second.
All in favor, say aye, or yes.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eight C, resolution to approve Dr. Mark Brickley, Bickley, appointment of Madeline Bickley to the medical examiner's staff, and notify the state medical examiner's office of set approval. Smooth. Second.
Second, second.
At least for discussion purpose. Do we have any discussion?
I can update a little bit, you'll notice the name of the person, Ms. Bickley, she, it does happen to be Dr. Bickley's granddaughter, but she did provide her resume, and she is a paramedic, has practical experience, she doesn't want to be in this field, and wants to have the experience to accompany him on some of these calls. The state medical examiner of this, the board.
Hey, Ron, this is Chris, I just got into the meeting.
Please, Chris.
Anyway, the state medical examiner's office has requested that this board approve that. I don't know if that's routine, because it's been so long since we've added Dr. Bickley to that. That won't make a difference in what we pay, because she'll be doing something that someone else would have done. We pay on a per-call basis, so.
So, we pay, can you just remind me, because I obviously forgot, we pay on a per-call basis, I'm trying to remember what that amount is.
It depends on what type of call it ends up being, some of them are only fifty dollars, some of them are ninety, some of them are two hundred.
Okay.
So, actually, relatively inexpensive, I think. We looked at the fees, their average are below, I think, when you look at them statewide, so, Dr. Bickley's probably not overcharging us for his services.
Yeah.
My only concern was, Michelle, if she's going out shadowing him, are we paying for both of them, or do we need to be paying for one?
Um, I don't, the way that Dr. Bickley spoke about it, I don't believe so.
Is this, is this the contract, or is it?
Yes, Dr. Bickley, you appoint as the medical examiner.
Yeah.
He and his staff are paid as independent contractors, so they're, they're not county staff, and, yeah, it's an interesting arrangement.
Is there language now with that contract states that it's per-call and not per staff hour?
Actually, I'm not sure there's a contract, he's appointed under state code.
Yeah.
So, I don't, I would have to do some research to see if that's in writing. I, I think there would at least be a word resolution when those fees were changed a few years ago.
Yeah.
They haven't been updated since, probably at least two weeks ago.
Could we hold off for action on that till next week, maybe? To see a couple of things cleared up? Would that make sense, or do we need to do something now?
We have time, what would, I guess I just want some direction about what you'd like me to do with that.
Well, nothing, I'll do, I'll do the homework, you have enough on your plate.
Okay.
I, I mean, I would like to know if we do pay per call or per staff hour, because if it's per staff hour...
We don't pay per staff hour, I already know that.
Okay, okay.
We, we'll pay that fifty, ninety, or two hundred, or whoever goes on.
I'd like to know if there's a contract.
Yeah.
Okay.
That part.
We, well, we do, you said we do know that there's not a contract, or we're unsure?
I am not sure.
Okay, so we didn't. All right, well, can we table this until next week? Yeah. I think so, there is a motion and a second already, so, what do we need to? Proceed.
We're gonna have to say amend the motion table.
Sounds good to me. Your motion to amend?
Motion was made by, that's right.
So, yeah, so, to amend, yeah.
Amend, so, then we need a second to amend, the motion to table.
I'm second, thank you.
All right, so all in favor of the amended to table?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Right there? All right. Item eight D, resolution to direct the county engineer to undertake steps to purchase a used S U V using procedures in compliance with the purchasing policy in, at an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars.
Smooth.
Second.
Good morning again, Board. So, for F Y twenty-six, we did budget thirty thousand dollars as part of our capital. Budget was to buy or to replace a Trailblazer, a twenty, two thousand and seven Trailblazer. That frame is very rusty, it's, it is in need of replacement. I would like to ask that we be allowed to spend it for thirty-five thousand, we've been doing a lot of comparison shopping, and we feel that thirty-five thousand will get us closer to our, and we do desire something, a vehicle that is all-wheel drive, three to seven years old, about sixty to eighty thousand miles on the vehicle. We prefer an S U V, we would like to use it for our signed inventory data, as well as routine trips around the state for conferences, etc. We would like to use the, the used vehicle process, similar to how we purchased the Grado, where I'm asking for approval to be able to spend up to this amount, and then we will come back to you, probably next week, and tell you about the vehicle that we have found and how we met the criteria. Can I answer any questions?
I've been booted out multiple times, and it took like, uh...
I'm sorry.
Yes, I will catch up a little more.
Hey, Chris, sorry, Chris, this is live. Do we have other things on your capital list that have already been purchased?
Yes.
That are under?
Yes, thank, thank you for mentioning that, yes, we did purchase the Grado, we had budgeted five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the Grado, and that came in at, I believe, four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
Desertified, is.
Yeah, so we, we do have a little bit of wiggle room in our total capital request for F Y twenty-six. Thank you.
This is a resolution, roll call please.
Grant.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Kurt and Buck.
Yes.
Paul.
Schwartz.
Yes.
There you go. All right, any reports or information from the board?
I was just gonna comment, after listening to Nate have his item approved for the opioid funds, back when Vicky had spoken to us about possibly using those opioid lines, funds for, I think, a program that they had through the health department was too good for drugs, and it was in the schools, and the board seems fairly interested, at least, I think it was thirteen or fourteen thousand dollars, but, and I was just going to say, I, I think she's been interested and concerned if we were gonna follow through with that, so I thought I'd ask Mike, I'd ask her if she put together a contract or something that we look at, maybe have him take a look at it, put it on the agenda for board discussion next week, and then see if she can attend, or first, I guess, to be with it, to present, if that's...
Are you talking about Vicky or Caitlin?
Vicky, Vicky Miller with Pathways.
How long ago was that program, Too Good For Drugs?
Oh, you're gonna ask somebody that's not worked with us, I was gonna say, in our, I mean, as far as...
Was it in the last, like, recent last couple of years?
Yeah, they've been doing it, and I don't know if they've been doing it longer, are you familiar with the name?
I'm somewhat familiar with it, just from other committees that I'm on, I know it's, they've been doing it for a while, and it sounds like it's kind of, they're having a pretty good idea, kind of taking it back up, again, with the schools, again, the schools.
I think she had funding for half of the schools, or half of grades, but not for all, and so that was the portion she was looking at us for the opioid funding being a possibility, and I had thought maybe it was a new program myself, and I had asked her about that, and she said, no, we've been doing it, and Caitlin confirmed, been working, I think, through the health department, and a grant that didn't receive, or something, so that was the... Just why, then they thought it was a county program, maybe they wanted to continue, so.
Yeah, I don't know if we have any rural schools on that. And I know, again, I was on a meeting ahead of me this morning, seven thirty, they were talking about it on...
So, he wanted to know if it's...
Data, evidence, different, different, other ones, older ones.
Vicky can come next week, I'll see if she can, and then if she can, put it on, so everybody can hear that.
And so, it's the same.
To bring up, last Thursday, Justin and Arielle will sit in on a grow Cedar Valley breakfast, and it had, it was meet your panel with Site Selectors Guild. There was three gentlemen here that were brought in to look over the Cedar Valley for economic development projects. First time I had heard something like that from individuals, and it was very refreshing to hear the positive things that they said about our community, and looking at stirring companies to develop buildings and businesses here in the Cedar Valley, but I was very impressed with the layout and the conversation, how it went, so, I hope there's more. Last thing, just to let you know, we held our township town hall last night, we had twenty-four township folks show up, well-received, presentations went very well, thank you to Nate and Karen, and, of course, we had Derek TJ's presentation went very well, a lot of questions with, on the questionnaire afterwards, and responses, so, I hope to get the responses out to everyone, just so you can see what was translated, or what resonated most with those folks.
Yeah, I'll second that, thank you guys for being there. You mentioned the breakfast earlier in the week, and one of the things that they brought up was one of our unique assets, having, having Tyson here, and we asked them about, you know, how do we leverage that in our immigrant community, who's kind of the driving workforce out there, and one of the gentlemen just mentioned, he goes, I was surprised that there's not more food processing, our center's here, facilities here... more food processing or centers here, facilities here. So, it just kind of made me think, perhaps that's something we can work with, grow Cedar Valley or whomever, and maybe work that as a second driver down the road, get to that point.
I think you met with them.
Yeah, I had, yes, I met with them the night before and, and, yeah, it was a great, great conversations, a lot about our wire capacity as a community. Really impressed and full labor shed number was a lot higher than anybody. It's just, you know, when we initially think of ourselves, yeah, no, they were, they were, they were great.
I think they said there'd be a written report, they were gonna make sure that they disseminated to everybody to, so everybody would get a copy.
And it's sort of along those same lines. I know there was a update, I'll send it around, I got it last night on population study, not released, but, but at least some of the progress that they've made until this year.
When is that, how long is that gonna be before it is completed or is it, I mean, what stage? Oh, okay, I didn't mean to put it on.
I think there is a second stage right now, I think it's a three-stage process. So, they're, they're getting through it, they've done group interviews, a couple of us were it on, they did some individual interviews, now I just think they're in the process of bringing it all together and making some recommendations. You can start to see in some of what they've written up where some of this stuff might end, but it'll be interesting to see the action items that are, that are proposed.
We're good? All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.